You're ready.
We're ready.
Okay, welcome, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order now. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is the approval of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented and to add any items introduced by unanimous vote.
Sumo.
Yes.
Second.
Second. Do we have anyone who has any items to be introduced and added to the agenda? Okay, then, all those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item of business is the approval of the board minutes of the meeting February 24th. It is recommended that the board approve the board minutes for the February 24, 2021 regular board meeting.
Make the motion.
Ellen, second?
Second.
Does anyone have any corrections or additions to the board minutes? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Laurie, we're up to your report, so we turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak tonight. I have three items that I'd like to share with you, but first, I'd like to introduce Lori Barkstead. Many of you know Lori. We've invited Lori here tonight. She is our administrative coordinator for our adult literacy and corrections education programs. Lori has been with us as a BOSI's employee since 1999 and has been supervising and managing the program for ALCE since 2006. So, we bring to you frequently grants that she writes and we receive funding for, and I thought it might be a nice opportunity for Lori to speak with you about how we use those funds that she worked so diligently to obtain for us. And even at our last meeting, you approved a rather significant amount of money that came in as grant money. So Lori, if you will take it away. But you're on.
Thank you very much. So, I appreciate the opportunity to present to the board. I want to share with you that we operate our programs out of four different locations. We have the Amsterdam Literacy Zone and Gloversville Literacy Zone, as well as programs in the Montgomery and Fulton County correctional facilities. We also do a significant amount of distance learning, and as you can imagine, in the last year, that has grown quite a bit. Most, in a normal year, we have classes at all four of those locations. We offer adult basic education for individuals who read and compute below the ninth grade level. For those who do read and compute above the ninth grade level, we offer high school equivalency, and we are a high school equivalency testing center. We offer English as a second language, and in our integrated English literacy and civics education program, we provide IC3 digital literacy for English language learners to help them gain both the language skills and the digital skills they need to be assets to the area employers. We're really proud of that program, excuse me, because it does combine the English language development and the workforce readiness, and I'll have some exciting news to share about, to share with you about that a little later. In addition to those programs, we offer a broad array of work readiness programming and case management to support the persistence of our students through completion. They often need referrals to help them overcome barriers to completion, and then we help them transition into continued education or apprenticeships or other employment opportunities. So, considering funding, in the current school year, we have nearly $1.3 million in funding dedicated to adult learners. $900,000 of that is in federal grants, and the balance is in state funding, which is provided to us through contact hours or services that we provide directly. In the 1920 school year, we served 365 students. In the current school year, we've already served 237 students. We don't think we'll meet that 365 number this year, but we are doing our best under difficult circumstances like all of the education programs. I will say that there is an exciting component this year. We were just accepted to participate in a pilot program. Here at HFM BOSI's, we have been providing online digital platforms for our students who are learning in the classroom and at a distance, and we've proposed some new programming that we think will serve adults better. So, the state is doing a pilot with us, and ideally, we'll see that rolled out across the state in the coming year. All of the funding that we have is related to employment. We have employment preparation education from the state and the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funding from the federal government. We have that funding from the federal government to provide education and corrections for English language learners for both of our literacy zones and for our Title II, which is our adult basic and adult secondary education program. We also have stack funding in neglected and delinquent youth to serve adults in, or excuse me, youth in our jails. Looking ahead, there's something very exciting about the Title II funding. Today, the Biden administration announced that Title II funding will ideally be increased in the coming years. It's part of the American Jobs Act funding that he will be rolling out. We have just heard about this today, so I look forward to learning more about it, but it's exciting to have our president looking at the resources that we have to help job seekers so that they can become more stable in their income, stabilize families, become engaged as civic participants, and be assets to our workforce. I recently, very recently, just submitted five applications for new funding under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act that will fund programming through 2027. We think it will provide $925,000 a year for those five years, each of those five years, and we formed an exciting new partnership with this. So, we'll be doing some healthcare training for English language learners, and we'll be partnering with Home Helpers and Lexington ARC. We've also partnered with the North Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenters, so that for us locally, that would be the carpenters union out of Albany. So, we can help adults prepare with the math and reading and writing skills that they will need to succeed in the carpenters apprenticeship training, and we're going to get rolling with that in the next school year, and then we hope to branch that out to fellow BOSI's in the Capital North region in the coming year. So, that's a snapshot of what we're doing. We're busy here. We might have been doing things at a distance, but like every other division in BOSI's, we're busy. We're getting, we're getting the job done. So, I am open for questions?
Any questions for Lori?
I would, I would suggest that you crammed an awful lot into, into a snapshot. That's some, some very exciting partner, partnership work that you've talked about and the advocacy you're providing for adult learners in our communities certainly is something that's, that's worth our efforts and consistent with, with what the board has charged us to do. So, I think, I think it was maybe overdue that we heard about the adult programs that we have. We do often fall into that trap of thinking of ourselves as a K-12 organization, but certainly, we do a whole lot of advocacy beyond 17 and 18 years old, so thank you.
You're very welcome. It's my pleasure.
Lori?
Yes?
I always like to hear your report because I always think that that part of what we offer is so special, and you do such a great job at it. I do have a question. Has the number of English language learners increased in the last year or two?
We have seen an increase. I believe some of that is because we have two really great teachers who are making real efforts to network with our community partner agencies to help spread the word so that people know that our services are there and they're available without charge to the learner.
Thank you. Are the services provided at all the locations or just at certain ones?
Certain services are at different locations. For example, the English as a second language and the IC3 digital literacy happens at the Amsterdam Literacy Zone, but people from any area of our component region are welcome to be served there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Lori is a great advocate for all of our adult learners, and she is certainly dedicated herself to this program. So Lori, I want to thank you for that and sharing your information tonight with us.
Absolutely, you're welcome. I'm very, I'm very blessed to have a very talented team, and they do a wonderful job serving the adult learners in our region.
So, moving on, Dr. Brooks, the second item I wanted to bring to the board's attention tonight, and Christine attached the flyer that we had shared with our school district was about our expanded distance learning opportunities for, as a pilot, really, for the 21-22 school year. We have, we work very closely with NAREC and their distance learning team, and Mike Solofsky has been a great partner. He's been at NAREC for a very long time. And what we came up with was distance learning rooms. Everybody thinks, and many districts think that a distance learning program needs to be all in one space. So, working with our NAREC team, our Capital Region BOSI's team, we came up with four options that districts might want to consider for next school year. So, one is always, do you want to add an additional room into your building so that you can provide more distance learning opportunities to children? And then really, this is the bottom line for all of these opportunities, is what else can we do for our children that will help them learn and grow? The second option is what they call huddle rooms, or what we call huddle rooms. So, we may only have three or four children in a district who wish to take a particular course. So, instead of taking up utilizing the great big distance learning room that most of our districts have, they would set up a small room with equipment that is highly sophisticated that would allow all of the students to have a very rich distance learning experience, and that districts can add that huddle room at a much lower expense than adding in an entire large room. The other opportunity that I think is very exciting is about individual students. So, districts sometimes have an individual student, perhaps for a college, wishing to go to a college and they need an advanced course, or there are students who might be disengaged, but there is a course that they would love to take, but it's not offered in their, in their school or any other way that they could take this. And so, individual, districts may elect to provide individual students. They would find a space in their building. There would be a minimal investment on equipment, very minimal, in terms of making sure their sound and their video worked really well. So, the students could participate in a distance learning course in another district where they would gain this information, credit for the course, and be able to move forward. So, I'm really excited about that opportunity. The other piece that they have built into this pilot opportunity series would be to take a regular classroom. So, in, maybe in one of my classrooms where I used to teach, they might, what we call layer in, so we would, we would use it as a regular classroom, but maybe two periods a day, that teacher might be distributing, teaching out to other students in other school districts, and there is, again, a cost, small cost, to add the equipment that's needed to have it be a very rich experience for the students in that classroom. I wanted to let you know that when we sent this out, we had a separate distance learning meeting about these opportunities with all of the districts, and they sent representatives. We've already had four districts reach out to us. One district is interested in adding a second full classroom, and three, the other three districts are interested in huddle rooms and/or the possibility of adding the single student option and providing their students. So, we're waiting to hear back from those districts. They are having further conversations with NAREC on what exactly the equipment would look like for those opportunities to proceed for the 21-22 school year. But when Mike Solofsky and I were talking about this, it's just very exciting that we can provide more opportunities to students. It's all atable, and they would be able to give students something that they haven't been able to in the past at a very insignificant investment on their part. So, I will take any questions about those opportunities for children if there are any.
I think it's a case, Lori, of, we've talked a couple of times about capturing what we're, some of the, what we saw as challenges in remote learning and then taking those forward, and I think this is an excellent example of, you know, really providing opportunities from which we learned over the past, at least over the past year. I really like the idea of the huddle rooms and the individual options because I think we, you know, we've had the full distance learning piece for a while, but this really brings it down to an individual level that I think can benefit those unique students who can't find what they need in their district or in, you know, smaller, particularly the smaller districts. So, I hope it does get off to a good start.
I'm hopeful that the four who have already reached out are interested. We intended it as a pilot, and we'll see how it runs for all of those, but they are very invested in providing these additional opportunities. So, thank you, Dr. Brooks. And the last information I wanted to share with you, Christine had added an attachment to the agenda that's included, which is the award that our school library system received from, it's the Joseph F. Schuber Library Excellence Award. We received honorable mention, and I felt it was important to at least share that. It's an award that's given annually to recognize the achievements of small, medium, and large libraries, libraries and/or library consortia. So, it honors libraries that have taken significant steps with the, within the past two years to improve the quality of library service to their users. So, Kristi Beeden, we have, we have, we have groups of library, school library systems who work together, and she and Capital Region BOSI's, Washington-Saratoga BOSI's, and Questar BOSI's, all of the four completed a seven-page application for this award, and we were recognized for providing programming to library librarians. We surveyed 90 area librarians in that region for those four BOSI's to get, it was a needs assessment that they did, and they provided a program of 12 weekly, one-hour sessions on strategies to meet teacher and student needs in this virtual environment, social emotional concerns of families, teachers, and students, and enriching literacy through reading motivation. So, I was excited when Kristi shared with me after they had applied that they'd received the honorable mention, there's no monetary award attached to that, but it is nice to know that they're recognizing the good work that came from our school library system, and I wanted to bring it to your attention this evening. And, Dr. Brooks, that concludes my report.
Thanks, Lori. The next item on the agenda is Dave's report.
All right. So, I had three areas I wanted to speak with the board about tonight. I think that it is important periodically to revisit our organizational goals that we set last August, so I have an update of the work that's been, been ongoing, and I shared a document with you in the, in the, in Board Docs. Also wanted to, to talk a bit about where, where the state is around the newly issued CDC guidelines and its implications toward reopening of schools, and many, many, many discussions around that American Recovery Act, some are referring to as the CARES Act III, the latest round of funding to come from the federal government that we're anticipating. And then wanted to walk through, kind of a dry run with you, the presentation that we will give in a couple of weeks at the annual budget presentation. You should get a pair with me while I share a different document. So, this document was included in Board Docs. If it's easier to follow along at home, you can. I will also, if I can get this out of the way, attempt to zoom in a little better for you. There we go. And that should help a little bit. So, if you recall, we focused on three particular areas that are closely aligned to our mission and our tagline, to be an effective partner, advocate, and leader in our region. Organizational goal one was to enhance our regional partnerships within our BOSI's and with our component school districts and stakeholders, and we focused on two areas that I think were pretty obvious to, that should serve as goal areas. The first being to expand our relationships with the local departments of health. Couldn't, couldn't have imagined just how much work we would end up doing with, with the departments of health. Lori's position morphed into the COVID coordinator for our organization, but also, really, she has been quite a leader in the region as we have worked with three different departments of health, as well as the State Department of Health and the whims of, of the state leadership as to how and when many of these regulations that have, have come to us would be, would be interpreted and implemented, and what it's resulted in is kind of a tailored approach with, with each of, each of the counties, but there are regular collaborations occurring in all three counties. You know, Hamilton County, a little smaller, kind of easier for them to gather and have to have those meetings. The Montgomery County Chiefs have regular discussions, probably some weeks, multiple times, other weeks, they may, they may not. It's kind of on an as-needed basis, but a very strong relationship has, has evolved between Montgomery County and, and the schools in that county. In Fulton County, there's a standing meeting that, that has occurred weekly that Lori and I participate in most weeks, that Lori participates on our behalf, along with the Fulton County Chiefs, and, you know, there, there have been different, in different standards in, in each of our counties, and keeping those, those, you know, balanced and implemented the way they need to be has, has been a challenge, but it's, it's one I think we've responded to. You know, the, the one directive that's been clear from the State Education Department and the State Department of Health is we are, for all things COVID, to cooperate with and follow the directives of our local departments of health. So, those, those meetings certainly have occurred. The next thing under organizational goal one was to expand our relations with, relationships with law enforcement, and we have been represented on both, in both Fulton and Montgomery County on their police reform planning teams, and continue to work on the high-threat incident planning in, in Montgomery County. And, you know, I'm not going to go through and expand too much on, on all of the other partnership work, but one thing that will be new next year, I'll brief the board about, is the Community Schools Coser that will allow us to work to better support the medical and behavioral mental health needs of all of our school districts, and I'm pretty sure that the COVID discussions probably won't end at the end of this school year, and I think that we will be able to have some cooperative opportunities that, that assist our component partners as they react to, to the changing conditions presented by the pandemic. Our second goal was to improve our role as a regional leader and advocate. Just heard a pretty comprehensive discussion with, from, from Lori Barkstead about the work we're doing to support our adult learners and our English language learners in the adult population. And one of the areas that we chose to focus on was identifying, recognizing, and then mitigating the impacts of unconscious bias in our region. And it's been, you know, a year where perhaps it would be easy to be distracted from, from the work that you set out to do. However, by tying our goals to our stated mission, we can point to that idea of partnership and advocacy and leadership, and it's really allowed us to stay on track. We had intended to start some of this work sooner, but I am happy to report that we've identified a resource book titled, "The Person You Mean to Be," that we are starting a book study within our organization. We are actually partnering with, with the leadership of one of our component districts, and we will be starting that when we return from, from the break, and our plan is to expand that work to our entire organization, as well as to more superintendents and leaders in the region, in the hopes that we can build the capacity of the whole region to consider those unconscious, unconscious biases that we all have, and it will lead certainly into, into programming over the summer and beyond. Talk some about the work we've done, build the capacity of superintendents and boards in the region, and with the other work that we've, we've done, I would call your attention to the advocacy efforts. Recently saw a letter from, from all of the superintendents in the region advocating that, that the CDC guidelines be seriously considered by the State Department of Health, and I do believe that all of the items in our regional advocacy agenda that I had shared with you previously appear to be included and addressed in, in both of the one-house budgets. We hope to hear soon about the state budget as it's due tonight. And building our own efficiencies was, was our third goal area. It's been, been an area that we focused on with the restructuring of our appointment process and the HR software, and also ingraining this, this idea of partnership advocacy and leadership into every program. And all of our collaborative meetings that occur, we've taken to organizing our work around those areas. I've done something where, here we go. And you can see, we focused on communication within, within the organization and still have had some whole group supervisory team meetings, which are every administrator in the, in the organization, but with the addition of Jay's position as Assistant Superintendent for Student Programs, he has actually conducted more meetings at a program level, as has Lori with her program administrators, and then we come together as a senior leadership team on our executive team. So... So just an update, brief update on the goals that we set. You know, we will continue to report out on where we are and what we've done with these goals, but I welcome any questions or comments from the board. And I hope that means you're comfortable with the progress we're making, because we certainly like working with that framework. It's been very helpful. So the next item that I had for you was the adjusted CDC guidance. And the lead is you can go to three feet, there's social distancing in school, but there are certainly some significant caveats to that. And the biggest one is that last bullet has not been adopted by the New York State Department of Health yet. But you can see, working down from the top, it doesn't apply to adults. This research that it's safe is centered around students. The teachers and all staff still will need to maintain a six-feet distance as we continue to meet and this saying, we will continue to space ourselves at six feet. Obviously, masks will need to be worn should you go two, three feet. The idea is that the research has suggested just normal interaction. There's no evidence that the virus is transmitted more between people that are masked at six feet or children that are masked at six feet or three feet. The CDC has suggested that the elementary students are less likely to transmit the disease. But again, there are all these caveats. They do suggest that elementary-age students would be safe at three feet. They do recommend, however, that they be cohorted. Most elementary schools are cohorted. And you see, I've got the message of the zones there. While New York State has gone away from the zones, this new CDC guidance has their own zones. You know, and if you are in anything but a blue zone, I believe it was, they recommend the cohorts there. The middle and high school students, if we're in a red zone at six feet. And, you know, to go below that, we would have to be organized in the cohorts, and further, we would have to test 10% of our students every week. We could do that. We just need to know, are tests going to be provided? Will this be something that districts will use some of that pandemic money for? That, you know, questions still remain. No mention of barriers anymore in this CDC guidance that has irked some folks in New York State who have, and in probably different parts of the country, who have invested in barriers. But I don't think too many in our region have, but I think I've hit the other bullets there. With the guidance, we hope to, you know, we want to make sure, and the science suggests it's safe, but we would hope to be able to, throughout the region, bring more students in should we be able to move to three feet. And there's actually an article on the Leader Herald today where Mr. Hallard in Glottersville suggests that it is a strong desire to bring student, more students into school, but they simply cannot accomplish it with the spacing restrictions that they have right now. So different districts have different situations as far as their facilities that might allow them to bring students in. So we're hopeful, but it isn't going to be wave a magic wand, bring everyone back and, you know, put your masks on and forget about it. I would think it's going to end up being tied to testing. Do you know what zone we're in now? We'd be red. Almost all of upstate New York is red. Yeah, we would definitely be red.
Did you hear that report this morning about the test that Pfizer did for elementary students? Twelve and up, 100%.
But it hasn't been peer reviewed yet. It's a small, it's a small study.
Hasn't been peer reviewed, so don't do it. But that was good to hear.
It's good to hear, yeah.
You're on the right track.
Yeah. Okay. This federal funding that we've talked about, the American Rescue Plan that came, just want to talk to you about what we're communicating to our component chiefs and business officials. And again, I think, reported out a number of times, we do engage with the State School Finance Consortium and Dr. Rick Thames by month or every other month with our chiefs to give an update. So this is information that we repeatedly emphasize to our folks. The good news coming out of the New York State Legislature is they appear to recognize this first bullet, that this should not be money that supplants existing state aid. And if you recall, over the last couple of months, I've talked to you about the sleight of hand in the governor's proposal. Appears that sleight of hand has been removed, and things are looking up a little bit on the state picture. Not so much because this extra money is coming, this extra one-time money is coming, but the very destructive things that have been proposed in the executive budget don't appear to have any support. And it actually is appearing that districts in New York can, will be able to expect either the addition of aid that brings them to 60% of the foundation formula, which everyone in our region is above that, so it really doesn't apply to us in that regard, or 2% increase in foundation aid. So it would appear now we're looking at, rather than these drastic cuts and the supplanting and the STAR being included in there and the combining and reduction of those services aid, all those things appear to be on their way out. They're still negotiating, but we've been given some little more optimistic news in that regard. I have certainly seen years where foundation aid was greater than 2%, but I've seen years where it didn't make it to 2%. So I think if we were sitting in the middle of December and we were going to hear services aid, the services aid category won't be added, the proposal around including STAR as part of your aid pot is going to be removed, and we're going to give you a 2% foundation aid increase, even absent this money. It allows you to plan a little more confidently for next year. Now, this money is specifically intended for pandemic-related expenses as a response there. But the key is, you see the small bullet under the first one, schools are going to be looking at a financial cliff if they take this money and spend it on operational expenses that they normally occur. They need to be strategic with how they spend the money. 20% of it will be required to be used for extra learning support. I like to refer to it. You know, we need to identify where our students are. We've been teaching. Some students have been learning. Some students have not responded well to the model that's in place, but I think we don't know until we get the kids back in front of us just where we are. But that term "learning loss" is thrown around quite a bit. Even what we emphasize to our component partners is to avoid reoccurring costs. Don't look at this ARAP money as, you know, a license to go out and hire a bunch of staff that you plan on keeping forever or give large raises that you wouldn't give within the confines of a 2% foundation aid increase. What you may want to do is consider how to leverage the money and extend it by placing it into reimbursable categories. And I think the board's aware of what the reimbursable categories are. You know, transportation certainly, you know, one that rises to the top. A lot of the special education costs are reimbursable. Building aid, you know, building projects to see there's going to be a great deal. You know, there'll be some requirements for air quality with this money and also certainly our programs, but I didn't want to necessarily lead with that. And if you're going to add positions, and you should add positions and should not be afraid to add positions that account for the transition back to an in-person learning environment or a different environment than we've been faced with this year, but they should be time-bound. They should be strategic. And, you know, it shouldn't be, you know, licensed to spend all of this upfront and have a great 2021, 22. You know, there are proposals and there's lobbying to increase the amount of unrestricted fund balance that districts can carry. But probably what's more prudent than throwing it into the unrestricted pot is to identify those appropriate reserves that they can use and extend this money and do things that lead to some of the revenue coming back to them the following year. So that's, you know, the discussions we're having with our group. Little more optimistic, not out of the woods yet, but certainly more optimistic than the reports I gave you in January and February. If there are no questions, Kathy and I can talk to you a bit about how we're going to walk folks through the annual meeting and our budget proposal. We'll focus on the administrative budget here and the rentals. And also at this meeting, I've reported to the board as well, I will prepare a state of the BOSI's for our component partners as they beam in and talk about the things that have been occurring here and go into maybe a little more detail than what are in these slides about our programs. Always leading with our mission and our process. And again, real proud because I added some stuff to this presentation, but our chief financial officer created the slides. As you can see, this budget is designed to execute and support our organizational goals. So we keep tying things back to being that efficient, effective partner for our component school districts. So the administrative budget, and again, it's green on the bottom. You know, the component boards vote on the administrative portion only. And that's because of so many variables in the program budgets that are dependent on enrollment. And really, the program budget comes down to, you know, the choice of the districts to engage with those programs that we sell to them as being efficient and effective and worthwhile for them. But our administrative budget does go to vote. It equates to 6.5% of the total BOSI's budget. And you can see that $66,000 number equates to a 3.8% increase. You will see a huge piece of our administrative budget is the retiree health insurance cost. However, that is handled through an inter-fund transfer to account for that. We can get into some detail there. You can see last year's adopted budget, this year's proposed budget. You can see the second row is the transfer that accounts for the retiree health insurance. So we are spending nearly $2 million on our retiree health insurance costs. But when we back that out of there, that $187,000 increase becomes $66,924 or a 3.8% increase to our administrative budget. Does not look like an oval on my screen, because it does on the projected one. But you get the idea that retiree health insurance is a big piece, certainly, you know, at almost three times the amount of our active employee benefits. Resident weighted daily attendance. Essentially, this is how we determine what each component district's share is of the administrative budget. So it is based quite simply on enrollment. You can see the enrollment has picked up just a hair in the region after an even smaller decrease than the previous year. So it went down six students, now we're up 54 students. And you see, this is the, how it's determined, how much of that, those 15,446 students, the share, the percentage would be, you know, for instance, from Amsterdam, our largest district, obviously has the largest, will pay the largest share towards the administrative budget on down to our smallest districts. You know, Wheelerville, Pasico, some of the other smaller ones, Edinburgh. So the capital budget is our room rental budget. It's what we lease from our component districts. We will be renting 59 rooms, as well as this facility here at the main campus, and then P-Tech at Gleve Street for nine and 10, and then our special education classrooms. And it's interesting, you know, I referenced that number of 68,000, I think it was, 66,000 increase in the capital budget. Well, we're looking at a $62,000 decrease. And the increase in the administrative budget corresponding 62%, almost makes us flat there for the year with a $62,000 increase, if you discount. And we shouldn't discount it, but if we take the retiree health insurance out of the picture. So I want to pause and ask Mrs. Lewis if she'd like to weigh in if I have missed any of the details that she would suggest. I'm getting a thumbs up, all right? So we'll keep moving. Before we move on to the board election, we do also have, and I plan to send you a very detailed slide deck that Kathy created regarding our program budgets. It would be quite a long discussion tonight to go through it with you, but I would like to highlight a couple of areas. CTE, which we think is one of the best received programs that we offer in the region as far as the feedback we get from our districts. Enrollment appears to have remained the same, maybe uptick a little bit. But the program increase for next year, the tuition will go 3%. P-Tech, last year, we talked about efficiencies and making the program more effective. We reduced the P-Tech tuitions slightly last year. We are going to hold them flat. They won't increase this year. And we made some changes to our alternative education program last year that were really driven by, you know, the desire and frankly, the responsibility to offer a program for the students who have been deemed to need a different type of learning environment and need different types of supports than their districts can provide to them. The tuition did have a bump up last year, and it will be going up again 7% this year. So those are kind of the highlights of the program area. But every one of the programs is listed in this packet, and I will include it in a Friday report for you. Any questions on the budget? And we've got three available seats and three candidates running. Carmen Carrico, our incumbent from Mayfield, Rebecca Cosacrea from the Amsterdam School District, and Matt Sullivan, who is the current board president in Fond du-Fultonville, will be running. And that's all because we could not convince Jim and Alan that they should stay with us. So we started off with a little wisecrack about Lori, you know, counting down the time. You know, I do believe in my heart that these three people who have contributed so effectively to this organization feel like they can step away because we are in a good place with good people. But certainly, it won't be the last time you hear how much your work has been respected and how much we'll miss you. and how much we'll miss you.
I'll miss you guys, too. But I'll move on.
Yeah, so the the board election, the vote date will be on the 28th. And hot off the presses, I believe that Christine sent along to you the final budget book. And if you have any questions, contact me or Kathy, and we will answer them. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Brooks.
Okay, thanks. So brings us to item number six on our agenda, which is the approval of personnel items. It's been our board's practice to review the individual personnel recommendations prior to the meeting and resolve any questions that we have, and then to approve these as a consent agenda. So I would like to entertain a motion to approve item six, letters A through E, as recommended by the superintendent.
So
John?
Second.
Alan? Do we have any questions or comments about any of the items that are contained within item six? There being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items are approved unanimously. Item, moving on to business items, we have the claims auditor's report in which it's recommended that the board approve the claim auditor's report for the period of February 3, 2021 through February 24, 2021. Have a motion, please? Gus, second. Alan? Does anyone have any questions regarding that report that Kathy could address? Or Dave? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. The next item is the treasurer's report, and it's recommended that the board accept the treasurer's report for the period of February 1, 2023 through February 28, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
John? Do we have a second? Gus? Does anyone have any questions for Kathy regarding the treasurer's report? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item under business is the extra classroom report, and it is recommended that the board approve the February 21 extra class report as submitted. And I would seek a motion for that, please?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Alan?
There you go.
Jim? Okay, thanks. Do we have any questions regarding the extra class report? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We had two items to be declared for salvage. And it was recommended that the board approve the items for salvage as listed on the chief financial officer's memorandum that was received and dated March 19, 2021. Do we have a motion to approve those items for salvage?
So move.
Okay. Carmen? How about a second?
I'll second.
John? Do we have any questions about those? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And I say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We are pleased that we have three, that we're going to be asked to approve three grant receipts this month. And it's recommended that the board accept the following grant funds and authorize their suitable appropriation and expenditure pursuant to the state education department and/or local approvals. The first is the Stuart's Holiday Match Grant of $300. The second is a school library grant of $18,368. And the third is agriculture education incentive grant of $750. May I have a motion to approve those, accepting those three grants?
I move.
Okay. Jim and Alan? Anyone have any questions on this? Okay, not surprisingly, we're not turning down any money. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. The next item is the, our authorizations for the deputy treasurer. And we received a memorandum from Kathy making a recommendation that the board approve the following banking-related authorizations for the deputy treasurer to provide backup support for the treasurer. First is to authorize the deputy treasurer to use the electronic check signature to authenticate payroll checks in the absence of the treasurer. The second is to authorize the deputy treasurer to use an electronic check signature to authorize accounts payable checks in the absence of the treasurer. The third is to authorize the deputy treasurer to process transfers in the absence of the treasurer. The fourth is to authorize the deputy treasurer with single signature authority. May I have a motion for that, please?
Make the motion.
Alan? Second, may your honor? Anyone have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. It does not mean the deputy treasurer could start missing undue amounts of time, though, right? Okay, the next item is the, is a request for bid recommendation and revised request for bids recommendations. Pursuant to the competitive bidding process, it is recommended that the board accept the RFB extension recommendation and the revised RFB recommendation as noted by memorandum from the purchasing officer in the following areas. The first is protective equipment and supplies. The second is groceries, and the third is meat and dairy. Do we have a motion to approve those?
I'll make that one.
John? And do we have a second? Gus, thanks. Do we have any questions from anyone regarding any of those? Okay, then that motion, oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? That motion carries. In other business, we have a few items. The first item is the second reading of the policy. And that policy was on gender-neutral bathroom facilities. It is recommended that the board accept the following policy as a second reading and adopt it. Do we have a motion for that, please?
So move.
Okay, Carmen? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
John? Do we have any questions on the adoption, before we adopt that policy? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? All those opposed, none? That motion carries. The next is a renewal
For reading.
For first reading, a policy, thanks, John. Policy on equal opportunity and prohibition of discrimination and harassment, including sexual harassment. It is recommended that the board accept the following revised policy as a first reading. Do we have a motion, please?
Make the motion.
Alan? And how about a second? Gus? Do we have any questions or discussion of this policy on its first reading? Okay, we know we'll revisit it at the next meeting. There being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, please say no. That policy is accepted for its first reading. The next item relates to that policy, and it is the appointment of Title IX coordinators. It's recommended that the board change the, that the board change the title of compliance coordinators to Title IX coordinators effective immediately. And the human resource manager and deputy superintendent are designated and authorized to act as the BOSEs' Title IX coordinators. May we have a motion for that, please?
So move.
John? And a second?
Second.
Alan? Do we have any questions or comments? I had just one. Will this become part of the annual meeting, then?
It will.
The decisions, okay. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of approval, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item is to approve the board meeting dates for 2021. And you have had an attachment of those dates. We had some discussion because you'll notice that there are a couple of months where we have two meetings scheduled, and we, you know, see those as special events. But otherwise, it pretty much sticks to our standard process.
Can I just add that we made, I made the request that we add a November meeting. Should it appear it's not necessary, it just, you know, for, the nature of BOSEs is things are somewhat fluid with employment and appointments. And, you know, that was the main reason there. It could be, it could be a shorter reading, but it's an awful long time to go without a meeting.
Okay, so it is recommended that the board approve this meeting that's this calendar for 2021. Did I get a motion for this already, or no?
No.
No. So we need a motion to approve?
I'll move.
John? And we need a second?
I'll second.
Gus? Anyone have any question? I guess we entered into the
I jumped the gun, sorry.
No, I did too. So there being no questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Carries.
Do you email us?
I will email that to you, yes, tomorrow.
Having concluded the regular business of the board, we have now an opportunity for board members to make comments or reports. Anyone have anything they want to report?
I'd like to ask a question about our upcoming annual meeting. That's appropriate spot.
Yep.
How are we going to do that thing?
What I would like to do is conduct the meeting in here with the board. Or if someone is not comfortable, you can still come in remotely. But as far as adding the public to the meeting, we could do it. We'd have to do it over in the conference center. But we just got this technology figured out. We're running effective meetings here. So I would prefer to limit it to board attendance here. Even our administrators will come in on WebEx. I think that it's just wise to do it that way, but everyone is welcome. We will distance six feet apart, we'll wear masks. We just won't fill this room up with a bunch of spectators.
And I take it there will be no annual dinner or anything like that? I wouldn't think. I just wanted to get that out there.
Miss those dinners, though.
Yeah. Kids will miss it, too.
But Alan, we're going to bring you back next year for the dinner.
Oh, awesome.
Yep. Any other board members have any comments or reports they want to make? Okay, the next item is the announcement of the meetings to come on April 14. At 6:00 PM, there will be the HFM Annual Board Meeting. Members who want to attend, board members will, can attend here in person, and any others who feel more comfortable or it's more convenient can use WebEx. Our regular board meeting is going to be on April 28, 2021, and that meeting is, as always, scheduled at 5:00 PM. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, Alan?
No. We got one thing.
Oh, we do have one thing. And Dave had given me a reminder of this, and I promptly forgot. And I understand why I forgot because, you know how this, I see this stuff on the big screen now, which you don't see at home. Like right now, we've got a great shot of you, Carm. A little earlier, they had a big screenshot of Dave and I. And I thought, I thought it was my father sitting next to Dave. I didn't realize, I didn't realize how old I'm starting to look. So anyway, that goes into why I forgot this part. But we do have business that the board needs to conduct relative to executive session. So it is recommended that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiations pertaining to the HFM BOSEs, CSA, Regional Transportation Unit, and for discussing matters that may lead to the appointment of a particular person. So may I have that motion to go into executive session, please?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Alan? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, we are now going into executive session. So good night, everyone who, we will be coming out. There will be only, I think, one piece of business relative to this. You're welcome to sign back on, but otherwise, good night, and we'll see you next month.
I think we're good. I think I, we've got such a clear path on executive session, I think I can handle it myself. So Kathy and Aaron, I'm going to excuse you.
Thank you, pardon.
Good night. Okay, thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Sorry.
Oh, okay, we're back. And for the record, we have, during the open session, Christine, a motion by John, seconded by Gus, and it was unanimous. We did make the motion to add the MOA to the agenda. Jim made the motion. Gene seconded that motion, and it was a unanimous vote. And now we are acting on the recommendation to approve the MOA. It's recommended that the board approve the MOA by in between HFM BOSEs and the HFM BOSEs, CSA, Regional Transportation Unit. So we need a motion for that?
I'll move it.
John? And a second?
Second.
Alan? Any questions on approval of that MOA? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? That motion carries. There being no other business, Alan?
I will make the motion, meaning be adjourned.
Okay. A second?
I'll second that one.
John? All those in, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? So unless we hear otherwise, we'll look at a special meeting that will be held on April 6 at 5:00 PM.